So I am calling to order the October fourteenth meeting of the Salem Planning Commission. I'd ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Fott. Commissioner Freibach. Commissioner Heller.
Here.
Commissioner Levin. Commissioner Rhodes is absent. President Slater.
Here.
Commissioner Tev.
Here.
Commissioner Vera Brandell is absent, and we have quorum.
All right, thank you. And I think both Commissioner Vera Brandell and Commissioner Rhodes is are excused. Okay, perfect. Is there anyone here to make a comment, a public comment to the commission? Looking around, we don't have anyone online, do we? Okay, can we do that anymore? Do we do that now? We do. Okay, so that was the right question. Good. I don't always, don't always do that. Okay, moving on then to the consent calendar. Commissioner Tev, do you have a motion for us?
I move we approve the minutes as they are written.
All right, thank you. Make it a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Fott. Are there any questions or corrections related to the minutes? Commissioner Freibach?
Commissioner Freibach would like to see the city council to clarify their commitment to the process.
We're adding the word clarify? Clarify. Just ironic since you're clarifying your comment. Okay, does any, any objections? No? All right, we need, do we need an actual motion on the amendment? No, okay, but we do need a motion. We had the motion. All right, let's call a roll then.
Commissioner Fott. Commissioner Freibach. Commissioner Heller. Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Aye.
President Slater.
Aye.
Commissioner Tev.
Aye.
All right, we have a whole lot of nothings ahead of us. We have no resolutions, no action items, no public hearings, no special orders of business, and now write informational reports. Mr. Bechtel, welcome back. It's been a while.
Yes, it has. You'll have to forgive me here while I get situated. Are we speaking into the, the mic and not into the computer? Okay, all right. Commissioners, can you, can you see that? All right, thank you. All right. Old dogs can survive new tricks. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mark Bechtel. I'm the Assistant Public Works Director for Operations at the City of Salem. I recognize some of you. Commissioner Levin, I think you were on the Planning Commission years ago when I was a transportation planner. So it's, it's nice to see everything back again. So. My job in the Public Works Department is to run the day-to-day operations of the, the different infrastructures, water, wastewater, stormwater, streets, and the airport. So Public Works used to have parks, and then several years ago, parks branched off into the Community Services Department. So what I've been asked to share with you tonight is just a kind of a little bit of a primer or a review of, of how we handled funding for transportation here in Salem. And so I'm going to cover a couple of things. I'm going to cover a little bit about capital construction funding, but mostly my remarks will be involving the operating fund, which is a lot of, of, there's a lot more drama with that, I would guess I would say, given with the legislature and everything. So, so with your permission, I'll dive right in. There's really three funds that fund transportation services here in Salem. Our operating fund is called the Transportation Services Fund. And the Capital Construction Fund, which you would normally see related to the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, is where we do our project funding from. We have a small little fund called the Streetlight Fund, and you probably noticed that on your utility bill, there's a little line item for streetlights. That was established a number of years ago. We call it the Little Fund That Could, because we've only had to increase it once in eight years. And it funds, it pays for electricity of the streetlights of the city, and then also funds installation of new streetlights and replacement of old poles. So it's a, it's a good little fund, and I wish every fund performed as well as, as it does. Okay, let's talk about capital construction funding first. A capital construction project is any project that costs over a hundred thousand dollars. And the funding for those projects can come from a variety of funds. The largest generally is when we pass a general obligation bond, which the two thousand twenty-two Safety and Livability Bond is an example of that. There's one hundred and fifty-seven million dollars available for transportation projects in that bond measure. And it's a ten-year construction timeline to, to get all those projects done. There's a variety of projects, everything from street pavement, we call R and R, rehabilitation and replacement projects, to strengthening bridges, building missing sidewalks, repairing sidewalks, some, some public safety projects. And then there are some street improvement projects that completely rebuild streets. For example, Fisher Road is one of those where we'll bring in a, a less-than-standard street up to a, a full standard for urban, for urban use. Transportation System development charges provide money for growth-related projects when there's growth impacts on the transportation system. Development districts, that's where you're in a situation either where you're outside of where the T S D C funds are collected or if you are developing property and you're, you want to pay money in lieu of doing the construction because maybe your share of the project is a portion and not the whole. And so you pay into a development district. So at some point, future time, when other people develop around you, that piece of infrastructure gets done. Urban renewal funds are a constant and, and welcome fund of, source of funding. We are the recipient of both state and federal grants. And then we do transfer a small amount of money from the Transportation Services Fund, operating funds into the Capital Fund to do small projects. A lot of times, capital projects begin as an idea or a need in one of the master plans, in this case, the Transportation System Plan. When it is able to, when we're able to show that there's a reasonable prospect that it'll be funded within five years, it then enters the Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP, and works its way through. Sometimes it circle backs around, gets rearranged a little bit. But eventually, most projects do work their way up to year one. And if you make it to year one in the CIP, you make it to the construction budget for that, that year. So that, that's really how capital projects are funded. Here's just a, a table that shows you the different funding source amounts in the current CIP as it was adopted. And if you look at that, you can see there's about one hundred and sixty-one million dollars in capital construction projects for transportation when you combine all those different funding sources for the city over the next, next five years. The GO bond is actually, you know, obviously the biggest, biggest portion of that. But as normally the case with almost anything here in the city, it's, it's easier to get capital construction funding for something than it is to get operating funding for something. And that's certainly the case for the Transportation Fund, where we don't seem to have a lot of problems getting money to build things, but we have a lot of problems getting money to maintain them and operate them. But some of the things that the Transportation Service Fund funds, and people tend to focus just on pavement and sidewalks, there's a whole array of things that this fund pays for. It pays for our traffic signal system, and we have one of the best traffic signal systems in Oregon. It's cutting, cutting-edge, state-of-the-art, but it's expensive to operate and maintain. Most people don't realize that we have, you know, one hundred and eighty-five signalized intersections here in, in Salem that are just the cities. We also maintain on behalf of the county and the state eighty-four more signalized intersections. Almost two hundred school zone beacons, crossing beacons for PEDs, all those observation cameras that you see in the signal cameras. All that helps us regulate traffic on one thousand two hundred and fifty lane miles of streets and fifty-seven vehicle bridges. We have a bicycle system of bike lanes that is almost a hundred and seventy miles. We have a huge number of signs that we have to maintain, and they only last a certain number of years, and then they have to be replaced. But really nearly almost forty thousand signs with the signposts and everything else that go with it. You'll see striping on streets. Some of the striping is a little more permanent. It's like a thermoplastic or methyl methaculate. But we still do a lot of good old-fashioned paint striping on the street system that costs money. We have over seventy thousand street trees that we pay the Parks Department to maintain. And we do a lot of right-of-way mowing and maintenance. Our traffic engineering and transportation planning gets paid out of it. Our, our sidewalk system, over eight hundred miles of sidewalks. And then we, the, the street sweeping is actually paid for by the utility fund because that is tied to water quality going into our stormwater system. And then we do winter storm response. Some winters we do a little bit or none, and some winters we're really busy. By the way, we're supposed to have a, a pretty wet and cold winter this year, so brace yourselves. If you look at how that's all, you know, worked through the budget, you can see there is a lot of slices to this pie. And it's not just pavement. It's not just sidewalks. It's, like I said, it's a whole array of needs. If you break that down into the typical funding categories of Personnel Services and Materials and Services and Capital Outlay, you can see that it takes people to maintain the streets and operate them, and it takes a lot of materials as well. So where do we get the money for? Where to get the money from in order to maintain and operate the street system? Nearly three-quarters of our operating revenues come from the city's allocation of the State Highway Fund. The, when you fill up your vehicle with gasoline or diesel, passenger vehicles, you're paying so many cents per gallon, some of it goes to the federal government and most of it goes to the state government. That money is then finds its way back to the city through an allocation process that I'll show you later. But that's, that's how most cities, that's the primary source of funding that they, that they use for their transportation programs. Other city departments pay us to do things for them. That's where you see transfers. And we do get a little bit of federal grant money to run the Traffic Control Center for the city and some permits. But again, the State Highway Fund is the primary source, and you'll notice there was no local gas tax there. There was no local fee. We do not have any local option gas tax here in Salem, and we don't have anything like a trip generation fee or anything like that. So we do get it from the state. The way that works is the State Highway Fund gathers revenue from your fuel taxes, the commercial vehicle weight mile taxes, and then a whole range of DMV fees, vehicle registration, vehicle titles, special permits, driver's licenses, all those things. All that funding is gathered at the state level. The state takes a cut for administration of the fund and some other special provisions and some special debt service. And then it allocates the remainder fifty percent to ODOT, thirty percent to counties, and twenty percent to cities. And it's not a clean fifty, thirty, twenty. It, it varies. But basically, the cities and counties split, you know, split the other half that ODOT takes. So counties are apportioned by road miles, and cities are apportioned by population. So we, our allocation is based on the number of, of the population we have. Portland State Population Center is the number they use, and, and that determines how much we get every, every year in an allocation. We get it monthly, and we're pretty good at forecasting it. But what I can tell you is that it is not keeping up with inflation for a number of reasons. The, the, the vehicle fleet in the state of Oregon, the passenger vehicle fleet, as we buy more and more fuel-efficient vehicles, as hybrid vehicles become popular, as EVs become more popular, more numerous, the revenue that goes to the state from gas taxes is at best flat and, and starting to decline. So EVs do pay a registration fee, but they are not charged for the miles they drive or, or the consumption of watts or volts or anything, and not only that matters. So the legislature was trying to address that, and they partially did with House Bill three nine nine one. But just to give you an idea of where we're at with our, our five-year forecast for the City's Transportation Services Fund, we're, we're eating into our ending fund balance. This is probably a very similar story than you see with the General Fund of the city. Each year over that five-year forecast, our expenditures are outpacing revenue. And by year, years four and five of the, of the forecast, we have eaten through the ending fund balance and, and we're in, in a deficit. And actually, with, with the rate of inflation we've had, especially with materials and especially with our personnel costs, PERS cost and all the other costs associated with personnel, it's, it's even outpacing this forecast, which was done in January of, earlier this year. So the forecast is actually getting worse, and I kind of annotated that at the bottom there, so you could see that it's actually getting worse than, than what we originally had. So what does that mean? Well, it means we tighten our belts. But what are some of our needs? Clearly, one of the largest needs we have is our pavements. Pavements are what we carry our traffic on, our bicycles. Freight transit buses use the pavements. They're not just for single-passenger vehicles. All vehicles use, use the pavements. Based on a two thousand twenty-two pavement condition assessment for all city streets, about a little over half of our streets are in good condition. About thirty percent are fair and about sixteen percent are poor. So that, right in there, you gotta realize that represents about a two-point-three-billion-dollar investment in this community as our, in our pavements. So how we maintain that asset is, is important. It's important for our local economy and help people have mobility and accessibility. When you break that down by street type, by classification type, you'll notice that our arterial streets and our collector streets are in much better shape than our local streets. So a lot of that is because we have been the beneficiaries of some bond measures over the last two decades, and that's been allowing us to pave and rehabilitate the pavements on our larger arterial streets. The, the largest number of streets or the most mileage of streets are our local residential streets, and they are in, in worse, worse shape. Another thing is we, we take these pavement assessments every two years. We take them on even-numbered years, and then we, we date the report on the odd-numbered year and send it to ODOT. Two thousand twenty-two is rare because we did all streets. Normally, we just do arterials and collectors. So that's what gave us our best picture was in two thousand twenty-two. But if you look at this bar graph, you can see that the, the lane, the, the centerline miles of streets in poor condition is growing, and the centerline miles of streets in fair condition is growing. But the opposite is true of streets in, in good condition. So our street pavement system is degrading over time. That plays into a, a fact of life when it comes to asphalt. Here's a picture of what we call the asphalt pavement life curve. Asphalt is, is a good material, but it reaches a point in its life where especially if you have cracks and you have water intruding into the pavement, it begins to degrade quickly. And as you can see there, it literally just goes, falls off the curve. When you're trying to maintain your, your pavement system, you're trying to apply maintenance measures and techniques to that pavement before it starts that rapid curve of, of degradation. The cheapest way to do that is to crack seal those cracks with rubberized sealant and put a thin layer of slurry over your pavement. It's relatively cheap. It's, you know, twenty-six cents per square foot. And it buys you a lot of life in the pavement. If you don't do that, then if you don't do it regularly, then you gotta start doing corrective maintenance. You gotta start filling the potholes and milling out bad sections of pavement, correcting where the pavement base is starting to fail to the point where you're now getting into larger and larger paving projects. And of course, as you get into those larger and, and more depth to the pavement reconstruction, the more it costs. So ideally, if you could do those preventative and corrective measures, you could extend your pavement life a long time. In fact, there's a term called perpetual life maintenance, where if you are able to fund that preventative and corrective maintenance, you, in theory, don't get to the, to the big paving, paving projects. Now, no city in this world has ever achieved that, so you know, we shouldn't feel bad. But I will tell you, we spend most of our money in the corrective and, and rehab area of pavement and not nearly enough, enough in preventative. We do do preventative maintenance, but not nearly enough, because we're always having to prioritize the worst-case streets first. If you, if you look at the entire system, and we, we did a pretty in-depth analysis, and, and these numbers kind of become staggering, but just, it's just for a matter of, of, of scope. If you were to today go in and apply all the measures needed to bring our street system up to an optimal level of condition, you know, near-perfect condition of pavement, we would have to spend over three hundred and sixty-four million dollars. And if you did that over fifteen years, you broke that out over fifteen years, it would cost you a little over twenty-four million dollars a year. If you're just trying to keep those pavements in, in good condition, it costs you about three hundred and fourteen million dollars or about twenty-one million a year. If you're just trying to hold the thing together and keep everything in fair condition, it would cost about a hundred and fifty-eight million or about ten and a half million dollars a year. That gives you a, a sense of, of, of the entire system. If you want to switch gears and go to sidewalks, the way we look at sidewalk maintenance, and we, we are an absolutely unique city when it comes to sidewalk maintenance. In the vast majority of cities in this country, the abutting property owner is responsible for maintaining the sidewalk on their frontage. It doesn't belong to them. It belongs to the public. It's, it's inside the public right-of-way. But this, almost everybody's city code assign, assigns the maintenance of that, that sidewalk to the abutting property owner. We've tried that in Salem. We've tried it a, a number of ways. And what, what complicates it is the city-owned street tree. You know, unlike, you know, Kansas, where they don't worry about trees too much, we have trees everywhere, and we love our trees, and we love our tree-lined streets. And those tree roots and sidewalks do not get along. The biggest cause of sidewalk failure is our tree roots. And so the city, for decades, struggled over how to deal with the tree roots for, for street trees that are owned by the city, and we don't let property owners, you know, root prune or, or take down street trees or, or, or trim them without city permission. So what do you do when you got the city street tree versus the sidewalk? What City Council came up with in, in two thousand seven was a sidewalk code that basically said if you're, if the sidewalk that abuts your property is older than September of nineteen ninety-one, then the city will pay to, to repair it and will continue to maintain it if the damage is caused by a street tree. Otherwise, once it's brought up to standards, you receive a letter that says, congratulations, your sidewalk is up to standard, and you need to maintain it from now on unless the damage is caused by a street tree. If your sidewalk is newer than that date of nineteen ninety-one, then that sidewalk is your responsibility to maintain unless the damage is caused by a street tree. What that has ended up doing to us is, you know, basically, we've been trying to, we've been trying to repair the entire streets, sidewalk system. And we've been making a lot of progress. We spend about two to three million dollars a year. And about forty-three percent of the sidewalk frontages, property frontages with sidewalks are now the property owner's responsibility, except that most likely future repairs will be because of trees, in which case it would be back on us again. But because we haven't found a better way to deal with that with the City Council, that is the, that is the system we have. We may get to a point, though, where the city can't continue to fund two to three million dollars a year in, in sidewalk repair. So, so that's something we need to keep in mind. Our city crews are very efficient. We, we're doing just about, just under two miles of sidewalk a year that we replace. And then if you look at the next slide, there's just a whole range of, of city services that, that the fund provides. What an optimal level of service would be, what an adequate level would be. We've coined a phrase here called moving towards adequate, which I hope none of my grandkids ever use that as an excuse for their studies. But basically, it doesn't even mean we're adequate. It means we're moving towards adequate. And that is really the goal that we shoot for, is moving towards adequate. And then we have what our current budget is, and you can see the differences there. The funding gap is such that if you, again, try to shoot for optimal, we would need to be spending, you know, that, that total, if you look at total O and M for not just pavement and sidewalks, but everything we do, we would need about fifty-eight million dollars a year, adequate forty-one, moving towards adequate twenty-nine. Right now, we're at about twenty-eight million if you, if you, everything together, or we're at twenty-three million, I'm sorry, and we have a five-million-dollar gap. So we really need about five million dollars a year more than we're getting now to, to keep us on that path of moving towards, moving towards adequate. So without a local funding source, we're totally dependent on the state. And luckily, the legislature, about every five to seven years, creates a, a funding package, and it usually arrives just in the nick of time to keep us from becoming insolvent in the Transportation Fund. And that was supposed to be the case this year. And so there was a big package that was probably too good to be true. The original package was enormous, and it would have been a, a, a real windfall for every city, every county, and certainly for the state. But it didn't pass. The session ended and it did not pass. That created a situation where ODOT was going to be seriously underfunded, and a number of projects would be left stranded, and, and you probably heard there are short two-hundred snowplow operators because they couldn't hire them. And so it, it's created a big problem for ODOT. It puts us in a, in a status quo situation. So the, the governor called a special session, and they went to work. It got delayed because the, the key vote It got delayed because the, the key vote depended on one senator who was recovering from surgery and they had to wait for him to recover. Uh, but eventually the legislature did vote. Uh, and they did pass a, what they consider a stopgap measure, uh, which is House Bill three nine nine one dash A. And what that does is, um, it, it creates about three hundred and fifty million dollars in additional revenue for the state highway fund. So if you think about how that filters down to us, you know, subtract some of the stuff off the top, go fifty, thirty, twenty, allocate it by population and that's what we get. But in order to get that, you're, we will all be paying six cents a gallon more for fuel. And there's, uh, some very high increases in, uh, some of the fees and the DMV fees. Pretty much doubling DMV fees, uh, in many cases. Uh, so, uh, you'll notice I haven't been talking about transit funding because the city of Salem does not fund transit, uh, directly. But we certainly do benefit from transit and the, the House bill did have a provision that would double the percentage, uh, of the, of the payroll tax to increase transit funding. The future of this seemed bright. The governor, as, as, as me checking my cell phone, the governor had not signed it as of Friday. So I don't know if anything happened yesterday or today. But the Republican Party has now announced that they plan to try to send this bill to a referral to the voters for November of two thousand and twenty-six. If they are able to gather seventy-eight thousand signatures between now and the end of December, that would put the entire measure in limbo, uh, for an entire calendar year. So, um, if, if they do not gather the necessary signatures, the, uh, the, the bill would take effect January one and they'd start collecting the additional funding. And then we would start seeing additional funding as it, probably in February or March. So we'll see. Uh, it, 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 you know, it creates a real problem for ODOT. What do you do when you, uh, you almost laid people off? You've kind of laid people off. You haven't hired people. What do you do for a year? They have a biannual budget, which is even more difficult. Do you front load your budget and hope everything happens or not? So it, it creates some issues. For us, it's, it's a little more straightforward. Based on this slide here, the, the box on the left shows you what our allocation of state highway funds would be for the, for this year and the next five years. And you'll notice we never climb out of fourteen million. And that is just, that is just not sustainable, uh, with the kinds of inflationary costs that we've been experiencing. If the ballot measure is not, I mean, if the, if the House bill is not referred or doesn't get the, the necessary signatures uh, or if the voters repeal the, uh, or I'm sorry, let me say this again. If the voters failed to support repealing HB three nine nine one, then you can see the kind of increases that we would be looking at in funding in the transportation services fund. You only get half a year, half a fiscal year's worth of funding the first year, but then you would, you'd get as much as, uh, in the thirty percent range, uh, for a year after that. That would make, uh, that would help us. It did not, it does not make us rich. It does not mean that we can go and, and do all the things we've ever wanted to do to fix the transportation system. But it would create an additional twenty-five million dollars a year spread over six years. And it would certainly get us on that path, keep us on that path of moving towards adequate and, and trying to, to reverse that degradation of our pavements, making progress on sidewalks and all those other areas of service that the fund, uh, the fund provides for. So, another aspect we need to keep in mind is if, if the state does not come through for us because of the voters of the state or whatever, at some point, the city council may need to consider not being so dependent on the state for transportation funding. There are options the council could consider. Uh, a local option fuel tax, where the city charges its own fuel tax in addition to the federal state taxes that does, that does by state law require a vote, uh, to, for that to be put into effect. Another, uh, measure that you could use to, uh, to create revenue is called a, a street utility fee where, um, it would, it'd be another line on your utility bill that basically said, based on the number of vehicle trips that your, your, uh, household generates, uh, you pay a fee. So for example, a single-family home, if they generate ten vehicle trips a day, there would be some fee, you know, for that level of trip generation. If you were a Walmart with the thousands of trips a day that they generate, that would be a different fee. So, that's what some cities do. There is a, a method for a county to have a vehicle registration fee. Then they can choose to keep it for themselves or apportion it to the cities within their county. That is an option. And then there's some internal things that we could do, uh, as a stopgap measure if things start to get, uh, like you saw in that forecast where we're getting, getting close to being in the red. One of the things we could do is, uh, look at street tree maintenance and right-of-way maintenance as yet another form of benefiting water quality for stormwater. And the city's utility, uh, could pay for the street tree care and, and the, the right-of-way landscaping. But keep in mind that the, the city's utility does not have deep pockets either. Uh, and so that would be reflected in, in some manner in your utility rates for your water sewer bill. The other thing that we could consider is, uh, transitioning the sidewalk repair and replacement responsibility entirely to the abutting property owners. And the city would only take care of the corners instead of the sidewalks in between the corners. Uh, so those, those are some things that the, the council could consider either now or in the future. And that is a blistering fast presentation on, on our transportation funding. Do you have any questions? Yeah.
Commissioner Fryback, go ahead.
So on the sheet where you talked about the legislative session, the payroll tax amount, I thought it was, uh, one tenth of one percent.
Yeah, I, I may, that may be wrong. I think you are correct. It is, it is a one tenth of one percent and one, it would increase to two tenths of one percent. So that's, that is a typo. I probably apologize for that.
For, let's see here, for your operating funds or the personal services for those capital projects like a, I don't know, I think Bill Crest is the, are the project managers of the project being paid for.
Yeah, they are. The, our engineering division, uh, runs itself like a consulting firm, like an engineering consulting firm. So we only hire enough engineers, uh, to match up to the number of projects we have, uh, on our slate for, for the city. So all, every, every construction project the city undertakes, not just in streets, but water, sewer, storm, parks, uh, airport, uh, facilities. All those go through our engineering division and they charge their design and, and inspection and, and, uh, project delivery, uh, costs to that project. Yeah.
Other questions? Yeah, please, Commissioner Levin.
Going back to funded transportation projects and, uh, the, uh, general obligation bond down to the transportation SDCs. There is a substantial drop in systems development charges from three point four million down to one point six, et cetera. What is causing that substantial reduction, et cetera, a anticipated reduction in construction? Or what is the?
I, I believe so. And, and unfortunately, when you're in operations, you're not dealing with development as much and, and, uh, I could turn around and ask our city traffic engineer if he has a better answer than me. But, uh, uh, I, as is typically the case with, with construction budgets, your, your first year budgets are always bigger because these are projects you know for sure are funded. Um, and as you get further out in your five-year CIP, you're only hoping those projects are funded based on what you, you know, or what you think you know. So, um, when it comes to SDC funding, you're looking at growth estimates, growth predictions. Uh, as you will know, you can have a few large projects come in that you weren't anticipating and you have a nice bump in, in, in SDC revenue. Uh, or if, uh, your permitting, uh, starts to slow down, then, then you're gonna have a, a drop in that revenue. Kevin?
All right.
Any other questions? Yes, then could you make sure the mic is on and speak into it, please?
Yes. I had a question related to the, uh, operation and maintenance budget for traffic signals. It seems like it's substantial and we do have quite a few certainly. I'm curious about, you know, since this is based on operations, if for future projects, how much consideration there is into traffic circles, which would not have that type of an impact on our, on the operation and maintenance of systems that can go down and cause other, you know, domino effect problems. So as we continue to grow, you know, our city, are those considered?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. Um, traffic circles or roundabouts, uh, are amazingly efficient. And they do really well when you have a traditional perpendicular or near perpendicular kind of intersection. The only drawback to roundabouts, uh, is they take up more, more space than a signalized intersection. Uh, and so they're hard to retrofit into an existing developed area. Uh, because now you're, you're buying a lot of property, uh, to, to, to retrofit that roundabout in. But they are certainly a, a tool, uh, that is in the tool, in the toolbox for new areas of growth, you know, on the perimeter of the city or areas that are just not as well-developed. And again, I, I look over my shoulder and Kevin, is that kind of our policy?
Yeah. The requirement is, is that there's development if we find, uh, capacity issue. Does encourage developers to?
It seems like, you know, as we're trying to look at ways to, uh, reduce our operations budget that, you know, I don't know what the process would be for encouraging that with a little bit more teeth. But it seems like it would be worth it, um, you know, and it certainly aids in the beautification of the city as well.
You know, they're, they're a good thing. Um, I would say drivers in Salem are not used to them. There's one in Kaiser and I still hold my breath every time I drive through it. Uh, and of course, there's the one there, there's the one there down at the Costco down in South Salem too, so. But, uh, if you go to Bend, if you go up, especially the state of Washington, they're everywhere. And they really are efficient. Uh, and once people understand them, they're a great way to, to, and they don't cost a lot of money other than the landscaping.
Commissioner Fryback?
As I understand it, the capital construction for a roundabout, even in a greenfield area is generally higher than the installation of a signal?
I don't know. I don't, Kevin, again?
Years ago, the city looked at, uh, by Boots Treasuring where high and Broadway, we actually looked at, tried to put a roundabout in before we this was our development can, you know, condemn property, so it's all you know, out in the fringes, there's a lot more land and things are kind of prior to this meeting, I looked and has a lot of them and I looked at, you know, how and what requirements are there. They have been able to get more right-of-way and, and
I will say traffic signals are, are easier to maintain now than they used to be because, uh, we no longer use incandescent bulbs. We use LEDs. They last longer, uh, they're brighter. They, they use much less electricity. Um, and so there, that's a positive with the, the existing signal system that we have. But we also put more things on the poles now. All the traffic signal intersections talk to each other, uh, through the traffic control center. Uh, we have cameras, um, on them, uh, that help with the timing and trigger the timing. Uh, so, uh, we do spend more money on the technology part of it, but the electricity part has, has gotten more affordable.
From a climate-friendly standpoint though as well, it, and just a life cycle of these projects. I'm sure that you do life cycle studies when you're going through construction projects, but, um, I think I would love to see that. You know, maybe with greater consideration as we, um, expand out into areas where we, where there is room. I thi- I think that would be a worthwhile endeavor.
Other questions?
Yeah, please, Commissioner Tev.
Hi, thanks. So I had the question about the one percent of the budget that goes to alley maintenance. What is, what is that? Is that, does that work similar to sidewalks as far as like? Yeah, just go ahead.
Well, um, we, uh, we actually are funded, for alley maintenance is funded. It actually comes from the city's general fund. Um, and the garbage haulers, the franchise garbage haul, garbage haulers pay a franchise fee to the general fund and that general fund, uh, then pays the transportation services fund to do alley maintenance, uh, and, uh, to clean up spills and hazardous, uh, events in the right of way. So, um, a lot of that alley maintenance, uh, if it's, if it's a paved alley, they do get swept occasionally. There's a little bit of, of maintenance that goes to those. Most of our alley maintenance is for the gravel alleys, uh, where every year they have to be, uh, cleaned, which means that the vegetation has to be ripped out of it and then, you know, graded and we call it rocked, you know, new rock put in. Uh, holes, holes smoothed out, everything smoothed out. Property owners are, uh, responsible for the vegetation on both sides to keep the alley clear. Uh, but, uh, and then there are some alleys that exist on paper only. Uh, they're not improved and they're just somebody's backyard. So we don't do any maintenance on, on those. Uh, but, um, yeah, every year we try to convert about one or two gravel alleys to pavement. Because, uh, it costs less to maintain the hard surface alley than it does a gravel alley.
Yes, so something I didn't hear, um, in your presentation as like a savings opportunity would be, uh, like unpaving some stuff. Like, is there any opportunity for that in our system? And I'm thinking specifically alleys that are effectively, you know, could be someone's backyard but aren't. Like, do we need every single alley for trash pickup?
Well, uh, alleys serve multiple purposes. Depending on, on what level they've been developed, you know, either they're not there at all or they're gravel alleys or they're paved. Property owners, uh, sometimes take their access for their, their garages to the alley or they have parking. Their garbage pickup could be on the alley. Uh, at a lot of places in the city where we have alleys, that's where a lot of your underground infrastructure is, uh, especially your sewers. Uh, so, uh, water lines, sewers, storm drains. Uh, there's a lot going under, going on, the gas lines in those areas too. So, they're like little mini streets. They're like little mini streets as far as what goes under them, so. But that's not the case in every alley. And then downtown, they're an integral part of how people get around and how the businesses get their goods delivered to them and things like that, so. You know, every alley is a little different. But it's it is cheaper to to maintain a paved alley than than a gravel alley.
Yeah, sure. No, I agree with that. I live on an alley. I was I like, I was just curious what you were gonna say. Yeah, no, I acknowledge that, but it sounds like it would take some sleuthing to figure out if there were any unneeded pieces in the like, we wouldn't give up any like already paved, even poor condition roads. Perhaps. But maybe there are pieces of our transportation system that we could decommission. I guess I'm just getting the idea.
Well, there there are and and again, I I don't I don't do this part of this job anymore. I used to years ago. But we either in response to private property owners requesting it or through development or just the city looking through its inventory of property and rights away. We would we would deal with rights of way that are not needed. And alleys were certainly candidates for that sometimes for vacation, where you actually vacate the the right of way. And and that's just on a case by case basis. There are all sorts of little stubs of alleys around the city that, you know, an alley doesn't go the one doesn't go all the way through is not as useful. So that begs the question, does it need to be there? And again, we look at things like, are the utilities in that alley or not? Are there easements? So but believe me, you know, we're always looking for things to not maintain. So if there's a right of way out there that nobody needs, nobody wants, we don't want to maintain it.
All right, right. But the process right now is it would be initiated by the landowner.
Most of most of the time it is. We keep saying when we're not so busy, we'll start looking for these things and but we rarely are not so busy.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Commissioner Fryback.
So I, as I understand it, there's a there's a threshold for a certain amount of vehicle volume a street has to has before you have to put a center line on it, correct?
Put a what on it?
Center line? Like, you know, at a certain amount of vehicle traffic, then you have to paint a center line on that street?
Well, there's there are certain guides that our traffic engineers would use to determine that. So it it could be the tight radius of a curve where you don't want traffic to to go to the other side of the curve. It could be based on traffic volumes. It could be based on the classification of the street. You know, a lot of our very few of our residential local streets have striping. Only if they have, like I said, a severe curve or something where it's a safety measure. But once you get into the, even a lot of our collector streets are not necessarily striped. But certainly arterial streets are always striped in some collectors.
Okay, I've traveled to a few locations around the country and they some of their even rural collectors and local streets, they only occasionally just stripe the corners or the vertical crests. I've just noticed in parts of South Salem and other areas of Salem, they're pretty lower traffic streets that have center lines the whole way through and it seems like that could be a good opportunity to see some change.
It could be site distance issues. Like you said, it could be vertical curve or horizontal curve. Again, the guy behind me is better to ask that question, so. Yeah.
Well, I have one question if I could. So I was unclear about the sidewalk tree issue. I heard that to say that Salem is the only city that has city trees that intrude on sidewalks. And I know that's not the case. So when you're saying Salem's unique, what what are we unique about?
Yeah, I apologize if I was confusing. No, you know, any any city has trees and 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 universally tree tree roots and sidewalks don't get along. It's not just Salem. But what's unique about Salem is we actually have a sidewalk ordinance where the city takes on so much responsibility for the repair.
So and so you're saying in other cities, if a street tree intrudes and damages a sidewalk, the homeowner actually pays for that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, that, okay, that surprised me. That's okay. Thank you.
And that and now that creates issues because some cities are are very lax and they'll let the property owner kind of do what they will with the street tree.
But not Salem.
But not Salem. Other cities are very strict about their trees and they still make the property owner fix the sidewalk. But they've got to get a series of permits and inspections and and the the city arborist will tell them what things they can and can't do to the roots. So it it varies.
Yeah. Do we now as a practice install root barriers in the side for the sidewalks?
That is a tool that's available. Yep.
And do we use it regularly?
We do.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all for me. Anything? Oh, one more follow up.
Kind of on the same topic, is there a place to look up who is responsible? Like you keep adding, you know, miles or whatever each year that the city is no longer responsible for maintaining the sidewalks. How does and you sent a letter like it sounds like once to some landowner? But what if they sell the house the next year? How would that?
We 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 maintain a G I S layer.
Okay.
That geographic information system. No, it it really isn't. It's it's available. I mean, it's it's a public record. I mean, anybody could ask, you know, what's the status of my property and we just look it up. But it's not really on the web because it it's, for one thing, it's kind of a working layer in the G I S system. And it it tells everybody the you know, the kind of the status of your sidewalk in front of your home, so. We decided not to make that public facing. I guess we could, but you know, you get your letter. If you're smart, you keep hold of it. Otherwise, we can, you know.
Ninety ninety, what was it?
Nineteen nineteen, September nineteen ninety one. Yeah, yeah. But but as we do the sidewalk repairs, about every three months, we send out a batch of letters and say, hey, it's yours now. But we don't have, we only have one sidewalk inspector for the whole city. And and he is not walking around enforcing sidewalk issues very much. He's trying to decide what are the next areas our crews go to to work on. So we're not an enforcement based city. Other cities where the property owners are responsible for that maintenance. Many cities do have sidewalk inspectors with enforcement, you know, duties. And you would get a letter saying, hey, you have ninety days to fix your sidewalk or the city will do it and and charge you for it. So that, you know, some cities do that.
I guess I'm frustrated more that we're treating this public good like like it's at the whim of the property owner behind it and that frustrates me. Because the result is you could get very bad sidewalks and I see them. And I know there's a whole bigger picture here with maintenance, but I just wanted to express that. Frustrating to have your potential, if you're a walk if walking is your primary mode of transportation, to be at the whim of the people who, you know, live behind or own that property.
So I I will tell you the and I know your hands up, but I will tell you that we we attack the sidewalk issues in in three ways with our city crews. Because we we are under the watchful eye of of several advocacy groups for A D A compliance. We have a large sidewalk repair crew that will take on an area of town and go after the arterial and collector streets. Work around schools, work around shopping districts, institutions, things like that. And they focus on the we all the the critical pedestrian routes or the critical transit routes. And that's kind of what they focus on are those those larger areas and those those more heavily traveled streets. Then you get into the neighborhood streets. And frankly, that's where most of our sidewalk problems are are deep in the neighborhoods where the big beautiful trees are. Unfortunately, when you look at federal regulations and you look at how the advocacy groups litigate, they are more concerned about access to transit and all these shopping, all those areas I just mentioned. And so it's very hard to prioritize the neighborhood streets. So what we do is, you know, our largest crew is out there working in those those critical areas. We have another crew, we call our spot repair crew or the flying crew. And they will work on each neighborhood association's kind of top five hit list. And we kind of determine what those top five are. But we let the neighborhood associations know, hey, the the crew is going to be in your neighbor's association for the next couple of months, working on these different locations. And we kind of try to hit the worst ones. If you file an A D A complaint with the city, you go to the top of the list. So if you are, if you're wheelchair bound or you have a mobility issue, you can file a inquiry with the city and then we go out and look and see if that puts you to the top of the list. Then we have a patch and grind crew. It's just nothing but go out and just try to patch and grind and smooth out and things like that.
Thank you. Yeah, wasn't just to be clear, I'm not criticizing your team or anything, just the system in general.
There's never enough resources for the problem. That's I think that's the biggest problem. Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fryback.
One more question. So is I guess maybe two. Is that nineteen ninety one date? Because of the A D A Act that?
It's to be honest with you, it was a this was this was a sidewalk ordinance that we promulgated in two thousand and seven. And nineteen ninety one was based on how old we felt a sidewalk was in two thousand and seven, a sidewalk that was installed in nineteen ninety one was probably in really good shape still. And so if it was pretty much in pretty good shape, then we could with confidence turn that over to the property owner and say, you're looking at future repairs. And so those future repairs are on you, except for the tree roots. So nineteen ninety one, there's there's nothing magical about it. It was, hey, the sidewalk is probably still good if it was built ninety one. Anything older than that, it might be starting to have problems. And then the property owners will say, well, that's not fair. It's already defective and now you're making me fix it.
And then my second question was just pertaining to the city's exposure to like an A D A related suit. But it sounds like you kind of already touched on that a little bit.
Yeah, we we have, we we actually have really good standing with like one advocacy group is Disability Rights Oregon. And we've had, you know, two different times where they've come in and pointed out to us where they would like us to concentrate our resources in order to avoid litigation. And we've been more than happy to to do that. And it's worked out well. Other cities that resist that can end up under a court order. There's cities in Oregon that resisted that persuasion. And now the judge has said you must spend a certain percentage of your transportation funds on sidewalk repair with very little flexibility. We we try to stay ahead of that and and be proactive. And if they say, hey, we want you to concentrate here, that's where we'll go. So.
As someone who used to do that kind of work, but not for A D A, I applaud you. Commissioner Heller, do you have a question or the only one who's not asked one? Okay, all right. I just wanted to give you a chance. If there are no further questions, we'll let you go and thank you for this detailed and not necessarily uplifting report.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thank you. And I believe we have one more report. Is that correct? The W S N A, I'm not. Of course it is. Transportation Impact Analysis Presentation by Mr. Nick Forte.
Yes, thank you very much. Are you okay to advance the slides? Okay, sure. So thanks for the opportunity. I appreciate being put on the agenda. So I'm the Transportation Chair for West Salem Neighborhood Association. So just as a background, this is, these are some of the issues that I guess have permeated up through our organization over many years and we thought it might be advantageous for us to kind of just use this as a forum for some ideas.
And and let me stop you for just a moment and say, I apologize. I did not realize that you were at the neighborhood group. I would have switched the order here.
All right.
So.
Interesting presentations. I learned a few things, so that's always always good.
I'm I'm very excited that you're here to give us a presentation back at many neighborhood presentations, so this is really beneficial to all of us.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, thank you. So let me just start out here. Again, thanks for the opportunity and this is just kind of, these are some ideas. I want to put this up as that's, we're not trying to say do this. We just wanted to use this as an opportunity to kind of establish some dialogue and just put some ideas forward. So if you can change the next slide.
Yeah, please. This is great. Thank you.
So the I just want to start out with this is kind of an outline so you can kind of get a sense of kind of where the direction where we're going here. So the real the themes are some some opportunities. So there's three real areas that we're kind of focused in on. The first of those is increased opportunity, consider traffic calming. The second is to look at multimodal solutions and the third is the increased consideration of transportation safety. And so really kind of to ground this out is kind of looking at some examples of kind of where we are, where we could be and just kind of really leaving you with some suggestions about some ideas. And we're drawing some ideas from what our experiences are and some as well as some practices elsewhere. Again, just suggestions. So next slide, please. So to start out with traffic calming, so this is a an issue that I'm sure all neighborhoods have some affectation with. And certainly we experience this. If you're familiar with this area here on Rogers Lane, some neighbors came to us as the neighborhood association as well as to the city. And so there's concerns with traffic coming up through Rogers Lane. That's the main connection to the arterial and then spreads out through the rest of the neighborhood there. So there were concerns about speeding traffic going through there. What could be done to kind of reduce those impacts? So the city has that traffic calming program. And this is a great, it's a great process, but it's requires obviously neighborhood approval that people have got to buy into it and then they've got to have, it's a competitive process. So just because neighbors want this to happen, there's a pool of money that the city has that's got to it's got to compete. You know, legitimately enough against other competing needs that are out there in the city. So our concern is that the process is somewhat reactive. So we can go to the next slide. This is the this is the city traffic coming website, just to show you some of the criteria that you use to determine, you know, what's needed, what are the criteria that you use to prioritize that? And then some examples that, you know, you could already seen those speed feedback signs around the speed bumps, such as what the neighbors were calling for on Rogers Lane. So those are some of the the things in the toolbox. If you can go to the next slide. So what we're trying to do is look at really moving to a proactive process and really expanding that from what we see is primarily a reactive process and kind of looking at that toolbox, expanding that and saying, what can we do when we're starting looking at, you know, new developments? Obviously, you know, West Salem, we've got a lot of new development going on there. So we're really attuned to this opportu what we see is an opportunity space. So what we think is some benefits here, you know, you can do it on a much wider scale. So we're not looking, you know, we're looking at a Rogers Lane. It's, you know, it's one point. Here we're looking at a whole development. So there's a lot of opportunities that you can put out traffic calming through that whole development as, you know, as a developer proposing different phases to be improved. And the the advantage also is that neighbors are buying in when they're literally buying into the neighborhood. So they know they know what they're getting when they're going there versus what we have to do now, you know, people have to, people have to sign in and maybe they're concerned about, well, do I really want to have a, you know, I'm going to go over the speed hump every day? Is this is this going to affect me? You know, is this going to negatively affect me? So it's a it's a people got to go work through that thing. If they if there was a development that's there, then it's much more, it's a it's a cleaner process. We think they're buying into that. And again, you know, that whole opportunity, that that comprehensive nature there also advances the ability to kind of integrate that with transit, bicycle, pedestrian. So there's a lot of spillover benefits that I think they're important to consider. So if you can go to the next slide. And so again, just I want to talk a point through a couple of ideas here and then I'll show you some examples that we've drawn from around. So again, the opportunity here, again, that kind of that broader theme, we can talk about roundabouts here, that roundabouts can be that kind of that focal center for the community. It can be a kind of a. Yes.
So are you suggest? I'm understanding this as suggestions for new subdevelopments that these would be standard features in new subdevelopments rather than retrofits to what's happening right now?
These would be in addition. So we're talking about you keep the traffic calming program, but it is more expansive. So that's just to to expand for so developers could for draw, this is an opportunity.
For future developments.
Yes, we're and we're saying developers have to do this. It's just that is there a way to encourage developers to, you know, institute this as a development is going up, you know, going on and being being put forward to the planning process. So some other things are, you know, again, and the idea here is that we can we can broaden that pool of things that we might be able to consider. So like chicane. So as chicane is like, it's like a slalom. So if you think, you know, winter going back and forth. So it can kind of help slow the traffic there. Again, mini roundabouts, it's a great idea for small areas. You can put in street art. We've got a number of those, you know, we've got in West Salem, we've got other places around that have got that. The city's been very kind, you know, designated those areas where we'd be able to put some, you know, street art. Again, it creates an opportunity to kind of bring the neighborhood together, but it also provides it, you know, a traffic calming. And again, just kind of a. Um, and again, just kind of a, a neighborhood entry or kind of a gateway treatment. So if you can go to the, go to the next slide and I'll just show some examples here. So this is a example from San Francisco, just to tell you what that, what a chicane looks like. But again, um, it gives you that opportunity there for having that, you know, wider sidewalks on one side. So again, you can put in some sort of street amenities. You can put in kiosk, you can put this, you know, wider sidewalk area. Again, the idea here is just some, just some suggestions for consideration, but just, just an example. You can go to the next slide, please. And so here's an example again from San Francisco, seeing some of these bulb outs. So, you know, the idea of the bulb outs, obviously, they provide, you're all familiar with that thing, provided, you know, the reduced crossing provides a little bit more clarity for the pedestrian when they're being seen there. But, you know, again, the opportunity here, it's, it's a traffic calming thing is also kind of a beautification thing. If you, if you go to the next slide, here's an example from Monmouth here. Much smaller scale, but again, it's sort of the example here is you can provide that sort of street beautification as well as providing those benefits to the pedestrians. Uh, and then the, the next slide, please. So here's an example from, uh, Huntersville in North Carolina. So I wanted to show a larger scale development here to kind of see how that interplay might work when you're looking at several of these large features here. So if you can see, this is from the, I want to show this overhead view here, but you can see that, that the brick paving there. So that's the entryway to this large development uh, here, but it really, it really kind of provides that important transition for vehicles coming in there. And I think that helps. You know, you don't have a physical, you know, hump or something in the pavement there, but I think it provides that clarity. Here's a gateway. You're coming into a different area. It can, it can help do something to, you know, change driver behavior, anticipate what's going on there. And I'll show some more here. This is just, so this next one shows an actual kind of a street view. So this is what this looks like. So to me, it's a, it provides a very, is that discontinuous, right? So you're providing something that's not necessarily a paved street. Well, it's a paved street surface, but it's a different, you know, material there. So, you know, obviously some sort of visual appeal, I think to drivers makes them aware of what's going on. So go to the next slide. So here's this continuing on further, um, and you can see at the, at the, kind of the end of the photo there, there's this semi roundabout. So the center area here that's developed here, so it's got some stores and some shops, but you see that green kind of three quarters of the way into the thing, that kind of green area is a common area that's been developed. So again, the, the idea here is here's some opportunities, again, larger scale. So you get this semi circle development here. And if you, and if I go to the next slide, again, just to get you kind of get a street view here. But if you'll see, you know, that it provides to me a very appealing aesthetic because you can kind of see, so if you're in some of these businesses here, so it's retail on the ground floor and you've got kind of residential on those upper floors. So it provides you some sort of a visual lookout over both the, the, kind of the green common area as well as on the, the street, uh, round, the semi circular roundabout as well. If you go to the next slide. And so I want to turn now to some multimodal considerations, um, that I think we'd also like to see, um, move more to the forefront, um, in some of the, um, kind of the planning language and some, some opportunities we, we think we can advance. So if you go to the next slide. So again, we don't see any, there's no explicit multimodal analysis, no sort of explicit process, but there is certainly, you know, code language that talks about providing facilities that can be used for transit, bus stops, this sort of thing. So we, we get all that. What we're trying to do is, uh, you know, what can we do, you know, again, in the kind of the development code to encourage this? So if you go to the, the next slide. So part of that thing is, um, looking at what can we do in terms of maybe get a level of service measure? Can we look at, um, both level of service standards are specific to each mode, level of service standards that consider all modes, and then other standards, maybe that don't necessarily get to a level of service, but offer some other, um, I think compelling arguments for advancing transit. So, you know, what's the total demand, the number of vehicle miles traveled, how direct is it, what are the widths, just, just some things they consider in that code that I think expand, you know, kind of provide a little bit more expansiveness to help encourage some of these multimodal solutions. And if you, if you go to the next slide, please. Um, again, the, again, the whole goal there is to really more explicitly recognize that. So we also recognize that, you know, at the one hand, I'm, I'm advocating for more, uh, standards, more criteria, but we also recognize that, you know, we're dealing with, except for a few corridors, a pretty low levels of transit use. So we may have to have something that's beyond just, let's just not just have, okay, here's a level of service standards. They may not, they may not help us get there. We're trying to figure out what can we do to induce developers to help us get there beyond what we're doing right now. So that's part of the thing. It's like, you know, thinking about those, some of those designs, those more, I guess, explicit design standards or, you know, uh, inducements that we could provide to developers. So if you'll go to the next slide, please. So here's just an example out of Norfolk, Virginia. And so they, um, deal with this kind of on a design concept approach. So the idea is, I didn't, I want to go in the details here. I just want to show you an example of here. It's, it's something that can be done, just an idea of, you know, here's a way to sit through it in sorts of like, here's some design templates. What can we do to, you know, look at, how do we get to a system that's going to be more conducive to multimodal? So more transit, more bicycle, more pedestrian use, that sort of thing. You know, what, what are some opportunities we can create in the existing system? So the next slide, please. So here's, I wanted to draw some examples. We do have some examples in West Salem, but I want to, I didn't want to leave those out. So here's an example. This is, uh, twenty third court in Barbary. So the, the city's been able to put this in. So it basically, it provides a path. So if you go outside the screen here, this goes into College Heights Park. So there's a connection to the park going through here. So it's a residential street, but this, if you go down here, this goes into Yola and just over to the left, there's a transit stop. So we think this is a great opportunity. And there's obviously examples like this, you know, through Salem, but you know, just, just some kind of small scale things that we think these are, these are, um, very more valuable than they might seem at first glance. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So here's, you know, here's an example, and we recognize that this is the subject of an ongoing project right now, but this is just an example of providing, you know, park access. So this is going across Parkway, going across Orchard Heights into Orchard Heights Park. So this is, there'll soon be a subject of a, of a city project that's going to look at providing a rapid rectangular flashing beacon to improve that crossing over there. So people can get access to the park and then improving the sidewalk connectivity going down Orchard Heights. But again, I just want to show some examples of things that we see, you know, how can we create these pathways, these more connections?
So my question, so in this example, I'm looking, we have a, a kind of a typical, what is that, a minor arterial, major arterial, street, minor arterial? And we've got some striping for the bike. We've got a sidewalk. Um, so is that like a sufficient level of infrastructure for bike and pedestrian? And the concern is that, um, we'd like some enhanced safe crossing, uh?
Yeah, it's like, it's, yeah, enhanced crossing. So, so we, so I just want to use this as an example of something that isn't. But what I want to point to, it is happening. But I guess the point is that if we could provide these inducements upfront, I guess that's the pain, you know, obviously this is an existing, you know, location here, but the idea is, are there things we can do to encourage developers to, can these be in, can these be installed or create these connections? Um, upfront in the planning process or provide some sort of, you know, inducement, whether it's, whether it's policy or whether it's criteria, some, some way to further enhance this, I think would be helpful.
I guess why I asked, I'm just trying to understand if, if some of what, if you're suggesting that some of what our current standards are, are inadequate and need to be changed, or if some things are simply missing that you'd like to see. So for example, if we have sidewalks and a striped bike lane, is that enough? Or you want something different for pedestrian access? Or is it more like, um, we need some new things like the different pavement treatment growing into neighborhoods? So that's, I'm just trying to understand the difference between those two things.
I think it's somewhat all of the above. So I think it, I think it's, so I don't want to, I don't want to say the city is not responsive, but what we're, what we're trying to say is that I think there's more proactive things that could be done. And I think part of that is trying to provide some inducement to developers rather than coming after, so like for the traffic calming, it's an after, it's a, so and I, and part, I get it. Right? You want to see what the, what the impacts are. Do you need to put these traffic calming devices if, if they're not really, if they're not really needed? And do you have buy-in? But if we're able to put that in upfront as a developer, you know, developer, you know, then it's built, it's built in, the developer's paid for it. It's going to be passed on to, you know, the cost is going to be passed on to all the, you know, the homeowners that are in there, but they're going to, they're going to know what they're getting into from the get-go. And I think we can help provide some of these, you know, these connections that what we see is we have to do a lot of, you know, retrofitting. So ideas provide, you know, kind of prevent that, minimize those opportunities, you know, in the future. So you can go to the next, the next slide. So here's just any, again, I just want to show some examples here. So here's a, here, here's a bike route, um, by a little bit of an kind of antiquated design here. But again, the idea is trying to create these connections, um, you know, that are a little bit higher design standards that can be created for, you know, some sort of inducement to developers. So the next, next slide. So here's that, I want to go, kind of go back to that North Carolina example here. So again, much larger scale development, understandable, but it's not, um, out of the realm of the possibility, I think, when you see some of the potential, you know, larger scale developments that you certainly see in West Salem, some of these larger apartment complexes and the, on the larger, you know, sized developments. But even in a smaller scale, these sort of things I think have value and can work. So again, this, this central island here, um, that I showed that aerial view earlier on, this is, it's a community space. So this, they have, in the summertime, they have concerts, they show movies in the park, this sort of thing. So it creates that, I think a greater sense of the, you know, community. So that's one of the things that we're really, um, keen on in West Salem, as I, I'm sure everybody else is too. How do you, how do you create communities? A very, it's a great concept. It's nebulous, but it's sometimes it's really hard to do. And we think one of the fundamental ways to do this is creating more connections, more opportunities for people to come together. And that's coming together through biking, walking, taking transit, making those, making those connections work. So, you know, and, and using these sort of tools or these inducements, I think, to create more of a sense of community. So if we can go to the next slide, please. So here's a, you know, I argued a little bit against this here, but this is an example of, you know, how you can have these multimodal level of service standards. So they exist, they're used elsewhere. Again, obviously we're drawing, you know, we're drawing from Florida here. So there's, you know, lots of opportunities to draw from things, but I just, the idea, part of the thing is just to kind of put a lot of ideas out there and then you're the expert, you kind of go through this stuff and say, hmm, this, maybe this makes sense, maybe this doesn't make sense. But we think there's some, some things out there to be considered. Maybe, maybe they work in the Salem context, maybe they don't, but I think there's, it's worth considering to figure out what are the most, um, opportune ways to move some of these ideas forward. And we don't want to be the one saying, you got to do X, Y, you know, you got to take this path. What we're trying to say is there's an issue, we think there's some potential solutions, pathways, and we're just trying to provide a bevy of some options you can kind of maybe sample from, consider, think through. So if you go to the next slide. So the final thing is, um, safety. So if we go, go to the next slide and I'll just talk about some ideas here. So there's no explicit mention of, uh, safety in the standards for, um, the TIA. So it talks about, you know, looking at other intersections outside. And obviously the city has, there's a big focus on safety. So we recognize that you got a transportation system plan. So there's a, you know, there's ground, it's ground in, but it's not necessarily, we don't have any sort of specific criteria. What do you look at when a developer comes forward and they're doing an impact analysis? What are the sort of criteria? So if you, if you go to the next slide, so here's some ideas. The idea is that we're trying to look at some cost effective things. So some ideas might be, is this on the city's, you know, high injury network or crash, network? Or whatever, whatever you want to define it, where are the, where are the major, you know, where's there an over representation of severe and fatal crashes? And are there some opportunities for doing some improvement? So some kind of, you know, criteria you might consider looking at, you know, where are the existing crash locations? Are the, you know, look over the last five years, they use the high type based on, you know, whether it's severity, crash types, whatever. Um, and then come up with, um, you know, identifying any sort of improvements that can mitigate those crash hotspots. So the idea, again, trying to, trying to um, bake that into the process. So when the, you know, impact study is done, that's specifically considered and there've got to be some criteria looking at those crash hotspots, but not just what's there. Obviously, when we're talking about new development, there's nothing, there's nothing there. So we're creating something. So, but the idea is, we can look at some ideas and might say, this type of treatment or this type of pedestrian crossing is going to be safer than this. Can we, can we kind of come up some sort of rank or what's the risk that pedestrians or vehicle drivers are going to face going through here? What can be done to reduce that? So it just, it's just kind of, you know, more in-depth stepping through the process. If I can go to the, the next slide. So I'm, I'm getting towards the end here, just a couple more slides here to wrap it up here. If I go to the next slide. Um, so again, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what we talked about. So the idea is just, it's somewhat of a critique of what the current practice is, but really wanted to kind of look at some expansion options. So again, the idea is just to look at, um, some proposals, some different things to study, see what we could do to extend the current practice. Um, and then just the, finally, so the idea is maybe some ideas, create a study, maybe it's sending this to the city staff to take a look at, maybe it's you, you know, as a planning commission, wending through some different ideas and, you know, sorting through, but really it's, it's to you. We just wanted, we wanted to use this as an establishment, so you know, oftentimes we're, as the neighborhood association, we're always kind of on the receiving end. And we wanted to do something that says, hey, we really want to be forward looking and not just pick on this development as it comes in and saying, you know, don't do this here, don't do that here. We wanted to kind of come up with, let's be, try to be, we're talking about being proactive. So we wanted to be as a neighborhood association, let's be, let's ourselves be proactive and come out before the planning commission and say, here's some ideas, there's some things we thought about, we want to get engaged. So there's my final slide, the, uh, sunset as we go into, uh, West Salem. I could have, had to end with a West Salem slide, obviously. So.
So thank you very much. I think it's extremely helpful that the West Salem, uh, neighborhood association came before us.
Thanks.
I think many of the things that you are talking about have been topics of conversation here, and I expect that we will have some questions maybe. Yeah. So let me just start out with, with thank you. Um, I think there's probably a couple of opportunities to answer some questions that I think were raised in your presentation. I would, again, I was really focused on, uh, what are our current standards? And what are acceptable and what maybe need to be added? Because I think our current standards, that at least in my opinion, do address some of the things that you raised. And I think, you know, like every part of Salem, we're all dealing with, um, we've inherited a built environment that was not very amenable to things like connectivity and biking and pedestrian safety. And we're kind of, it's, and it's expensive to fix those. So I'm very interested in having the conversation about what we have now, how adequate is that and how we move forward? And I'm going to turn to Lisa and just ask a couple of questions. She enjoys it when I do this. Lisa, like, if I remember now, like, if, if we have a, like a cul-de-sac and there's another cul-de-sac and people can't get through, we usually have like a bike pedestrian connection requirement. Is that right?
Absolutely.
So I think, you know, cul-de-sacs are kind of a suburban phenomenon. But here now, in our current standards, you'd have to be able to walk through those. So I know that that's an issue that comes up. Um, I know that now typically we require pedestrian connections to parks and sidewalks.
Yes.
If we don't, so that's, that's an issue that we've addressed in the past. Our current local streets do not require bike lanes though, striped bike lanes.
Correct.
But our arterial and minor collectors?
Collectors and arterials do, yes.
I mean, look at Brian, because we have both the planner here and the traffic engineer. So you picked the perfect night.
He should just nod when I, yeah, that's right.
Yep. Okay. So minor arterials, no, minor arterials, collectors.
And well, we, we have in our transportation system plan, um, what we require. So not, I would say all arterial streets are going to have bike facilities.
Okay, okay. Right. And every, every street now requires sidewalks on both sides. Right. So we have kind of the sidewalks, we have, uh, arterial streets, we have some of the park connections, we have the cul-de-sac connections. I know, I know those are there. Do we have the ability to require roundabouts? As a design standard?
I don't know that we have the ability to require it because generally we don't have that as like a requirement in our TSP. So if they're just doing a two streets that intersect, you know, and they're, both meet the street standards, then we don't have an ability to tell them to do something over and beyond that. But maybe Kevin will come forward and.
So, so that's an interesting, that, that's our choice in our design standard.
Although it's weird, but the mic works. Does it? Maybe it doesn't.
Oh, okay.
Does work.
Go for it.
So y- yeah, one of the things that the city is, is needing to do is upgrade our transportation system plan. A lot of, uh, that, um, those planning efforts were done quite a few years ago. And, you know, even the transfer, the traffic impact studies that we use now were developed in the late nineties. So, um, we are working towards that. Um, we are going to be starting a big effort with our, uh, transportation system plan update. We're also, uh, working on vision zero. Uh, the state is requiring a lot of things that are coming out that are triggering, um, some improvements that we need to do and some planning efforts that we need to do. So, um, we are going to be considering all these things. So we can, um, as we move forward with these, these efforts to update the, those plan and efforts, we're going to be reaching out to, to people and talking about, you know, how do we require it? But we're also going to need to have the development committee involved because they're going to be looking at costs and, uh, you know, there's a big effort for housing right now. And I know that a couple of times we've tried to get some um, crossing improvements and got pushed back over, you know, you're, you're making our affordable housing not so affordable by requiring this. So whether they're correct or not is, is a different story, but, but there are a lot of, uh, fingers in the pie right now. And so we'll be coming out to everybody as we move forward with those, those, uh, planning efforts.
And how will the West Salem Neighborhood Association be involved in the TSP update?
I think we're going to be going out to all of. I think we're going to be going out to all of the neighborhood associations and talking to them about the efforts and the things that we're looking at. Um, and that includes not only just the planning efforts, but the design efforts as well. Um, we're looking at lane reductions. Um, you know, five years ago, um, buffered bike lanes was the big thing and it was like ooh and ah type of thing. And that's not really uh the direction we're hearing anymore. So we're, we're starting to try to, to see how we can, you know, make improvements to better design standards. Things are changing and we're, we're, we're a big ship and trying to move with it is, it can be hard. Um, but, you know, we will be looking at uh the latest, uh, we will be looking at other jurisdictions, efforts. We'll be relying on Oregon Department of Transportation and their efforts as they look at design standards as well. Um, so, you know, I think Nick did a, a great job. I didn't uh really see anything there that caused me heartburn uh or the city heartburn, because I think we are trying to do it, you know. Um, and uh, um, you know, for example, we, we, we have two development options. I mean, we have projects that are privately developed. Um, those we have to rely on our design standards and our, and our planning efforts. And because that's what gives us the authority to require things. With um, public projects like bond projects and grants and stuff, we have more flexibility to do things. And so those are a little bit easier to, to um make changes. Um, and, you know, we can take a look at, easier to look at roundabouts or whatever. Um, but for instance, um Costco, we, they set money aside for um speed bumps. If there, if we did measure a problem in the neighborhood and we never got a complaint in the neighborhood, we've had complaints on Boone Road. But um, it's never, so there was money set aside there. Fred Meyer Gas Station, there was concern about crashes at their driveway on Commercial. And so we had that project set money aside for Meeting Island if we needed to block that off. Uh, South Sam High School, we got uh money to do some speed bumps on rural and we're going to be doing that uh this next summer. Um, so uh Gussie Bell, which is a, a big um uh low income housing on Center and Twenty Third. You know, we were working with them to try to get some pedestrian crossings and the city actually, because they were concerned about costs, the city actually um lowered the sale price of the land so that we could do a pedestrian crossing on D Street and connect to the schools. So there, there are things that we're doing. Could it be more? Probably. Um, but I know that we do consider it and so we're not trying to be blind to it. Um, but we do see what we can and, and try to get what we can.
Great. Thank, and do you two have each other's numbers?
Yeah, we're, we're, we've.
I assume, I assume so, but it was a legitimate question. Okay. So let's start with questions, starting with Commissioner Heller.
Uh, may I see the slide with the calming that you put in with the different ways to calm traffic? Is that possible?
Give us just one sec.
Page uh six.
Thank, thank you. I, I was interested in actually all of them, but particularly in the road winds, winds or whatever it is uh to slow traffic. What, what's the criteria as far as, in, in your view, as far as speed or is it uh certain distances for straight, where normally would a straight would go?
I think it's primarily, um, probably it's a distance thing where you have, you know, a lot, those kind of those longer straightaways where there's more likelihood of vehicles being, being able to get up to speed. Uh, it's in that thing. So, you know, yeah, the idea was, again, it's just to, to widen out some. So I think it's good that we're talking about the, you know, transportation system plan. So we're hoping some of this can be a precursor, you know, to some of that, but it's really, it's, so part of it is yes, to try to infuse some of that discussion about what's going on. And then it's maybe it's like looking at some of the development code, but it's, it's trying to get some of those things. Yeah, moving, I guess that's the, that's the thing. And then try to plant some of the seeds for these ideas.
We've had similar conversations on this board and, you know, the, the direction that we wind up going is to take all of this concern, the same that you do, and put it into the transportation system plan. Because I don't think, this is my personal opinion, I don't think we're going to get a lot of changes now, between now and when the transportation system plan changes. Just because the feedback I get is, well, we're going to change the transportation system plan. So I'll just share what I, I received from uh the feedback that I received. Um, but I, I assume this will be kind of part of the whole background conversation. I'm going to go through everybody here. Lisa, do you have another question?
No, thank you.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Levine? I'm going to hold off till the end because I know you have six. Go ahead, Commissioner Levine, and can you be sure to speak into the microphone?
Yes. Even turn the light on. Okay, so one of the conversations that occurred some decades ago um was regarding the traffic calming. And, and the issue from the neighborhood perspective was the traffic on this street is going too fast. Part of the conversation. The meeting that was held or the gathering that was held at Willamette and discussed a lot of alternatives and variables had to do with creating alternatives to that particular traffic flow, street usage, whatever. So, so the question about calming on this particular street may be a situation of slowing down that traffic. But if alternative routes are not provided, the consequences of that proposal will not be satisfactory. So it is imperative as you take a look at a particular problem area is to step back and look at a little larger area and alternatives to access and egress to that section of the community so that it is not a narrowed perspective. One of the things that happened about that same time was the neighbors on Vista got that particular street closed except to fire trucks um coming um eastward off of South Commercial. So that by what was lost by as and uh, there's a little um commercial project there. So over the years, um, that has changed dramatically. And even though people have now established other routes, that street is still closed for no benefit to anyone. Now you can go westbound on the street through the intersection, but you can't go eastbound. And, and I don't understand why it hasn't been opened up because the entire traffic area and usage for that thing, that one bottleneck was created to push people onto other streets. And, and um, and the volume of traffic on Vista is completely changed now. Uh, it, it, people just don't go back around to Vista a block or two down. Or alternatives. So, so as you consider what you'd like to accomplish, take, please take a look at the greater area and also work with traffic engineers and design to, to look for a solution that's not, not going to be specifically focused to three blocks of one street.
Okay, no, that's, that's well, that's well said. That's, that's one of the reasons why we think there's, because oftentimes when we're doing it, that, that point location, the difficulty is, on the current thing, it's, it's difficult to say, where's that traffic going to go to some other location? That's why we think, again, notwithstanding what you're saying, but looking at those larger scale developments, I think there's some opportunities we can start saying, if you, if you do put a speed bump here, if you put a chicane here, that's going to move traffic. But ideally, that's going to move traffic somewhere else in the develop, so we can, it's, we can kind of, we've got a bigger landscape. It's not the full-size landscape, so it, we, obviously we've got to be, you know, attuned to what's going to happen on some other neighborhood streets. But it gives us a little bit more, some of the, I'm sure you're well aware, some of those developments that began in West Salem, there's a, there's some room to look at the whole, at the, a larger network. So that's what we think some opportunities that are saying, okay, we can do this type of treatment here. It's, it's going to, it's going to have some spillover effects on some of these neighborhood streets, but we can also, we can design those so they can accommodate what's going, you know, what's going to hap, that's, that's the thinking behind it. I mean, is it going to happen? Well, you know, obviously we've got to wait to see, you know, the proof's in the pudding sort of thing. But we think there's, there's a, there's an opportunity to do that in that larger scale and looking at some more, you know, that broader set of some standards that are, are probably not applicable, you know, doing a chicane on something where we are, you know, and going back and retrofitting are probably not the right, you know, it's not the right tool to go back and do. It's, it's just too large a scale to get the, to get the benefits out of it. But when you start talking about new development, I think there's, I think there's a lot, it's a wider, it's a wider sphere that we can look at. And I think people might, might say, hey, I'm kind of attracted to living on this street. It's, yeah, it's going to be more windy here, but the kids have, there's a little bit more, you know, sidewalk area in which they can, you know, do. I think there's, again, you got to, if the developers got to think through it and say, is this going to attract the people that I want to track? Is it going to get me the return on the investment? But maybe it does. I just, I just think putting that out there and creating that, that atmosphere, that opportunity, you know, it's just, it's just something I consider.
Do you have any questions?
Not a question really, but um I did want to thank you for your time and the efforts put into this presentation. It's very thoughtful. Um, and just say I, I'm fully in support of this approach where we look at it from multiple perspectives. We have uh less of a prescriptive path and more of a performance-driven approach where there are different um methods and, and ways of achieving traffic calming. Um, in addition to just the obvious benefits of traffic calming, there's also a livability and quality of life uh benefit that we gain from creating more organically feeling city streets and, and residential areas. Um, certainly improved and expanded landscaping areas. Um, you know, those uh ball bouts that, that you can kind of add into a street scape and um a street section that create shorter walks for pedestrians, uh pedestrian crossings. Um, all of those are just great opportunities and uh, yeah, just wanted to say thank you and very, very supportive of, of the work you've put into this.
All right, thank you. And before we go to Commissioner Fryback, I'm going to turn over, Commissioner Tab, do you have any questions?
Uh, not really, just thank you. Um, and I'm sure Ben will talk about, we have a transportation subcommittee on the planning commission. So we also have a vacancy on the planning commission.
Well, there we go. How about the well thought about, well thought about. You come to make a complaint, you're getting a committee assigned here. That's a make.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Fryback, you have the mic.
You, um, so yeah, I just wanted to thank you for coming in and talking to us about transportation. Um, I guess for starters, you seem like you know a lot about the topic. Can you share a little bit about your background?
Well, I'm a transportation engineer, civil engineer, but I've worked for the neighborhood association for a number of years. So it's, I guess there's a lot of experience that we've had as a neighborhood association dealing with um kind of various iterations. So the very, you know, an early iteration of the, you know, traffic calming thing and this new version. So I think we've seen a lot of um developments and actually we've been, you know, most of the time we have the develop, oftentimes the developers will come to us as a neighborhood associations and talk through the process. So it gives us an opportunity sometimes to, um, even if something's not in the code, to say, here's what we're, here's what we're looking for, just kind of like, we're, we'd like to see this. Is this something that could be done? Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. So that's, I think, part of the reason for coming here is just kind of like, it's, it's more like coming up with ideas and trying to um see things that could be advanced. But I wanted to do in the context of, you know, not just here's some ideas from elsewhere, but these are the things that we, you know, it's like, does it work in the Salem context? Or what are the issues that we see that work or maybe that don't work or maybe could be adjusted a little bit? So that's kind of the uh, the, the background a little bit, kind of long-winded, but.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I generally um agree with pretty much everything that was in that um presentation. And, you know, we've, we've talked about this stuff at length. We kind of actually ran headlong into it when um Fairview came to planning commission for a hearing. And I had actually drawn up a um, like a purple, because we had got so many complaints from people living on um Battle Creek Road, I think, about um, you know, people speeding, crashes, all kinds of different stuff. And, you know, we've, FHWA has some uh traffic calming primers and I think ODOT has their highway design manual and different prescriptive ways to design streets that don't, you know, result in speeding. And ultimately what um I heard from staff is that we can't necessarily require that uh of developers just be based on what's in our code. And the opportunity that would come up to change that would happen during the transportation system plan. Um, and uh, you know, that frustrated me a little bit, um, actually, pretty frustrating. Um, uh, because, you know, I look around even Oregon and I'm seeing cities like, I don't know, Woodburn, Wilsonville, Medford. I could just start rattling them off. Oregon City, Westland, Portland Hillsborough, Beaverton, Bend, Hood River. Um, all these other cities have seemed like that they've, you know, they've been um almost pioneering or leading the change when it comes to transportation. Um, I know there's a few individuals in Hood River, they've got their own, uh, they're doing like quick build bikeway projects to schools in Hood River. Um, the city of Corvallis has its neighborhood cut through program where their active transportation manager had inventoried and signed up routes to every single cut through in the city of Corvallis. You can actually go on uh the city's website, they have a GIS portal, and you can go in and you can view where these cut throughs are. And the city did this by a process of they had a survey and then people that lived in the neighborhood could drop a little map, uh, pin or draw a line on a cut through that they know about. And then it, it could appear in a printed city map. And a lot of these things that I've seen um are things that didn't have to wait for the transportation system plan update. Um, like the city of Corvallis didn't have to update their TSP to realize that they should inventory their bike cut throughs. Or um the city of Hood River didn't update their TSP to um, you know, decide that they want to quick build um projects near schools. Um, so I, I think um the conversation needs to happen, um, and I guess buffered bike lanes were, they were the new thing five years ago. And um since then, that's changed, you know, Ashdo has come out with their bike guide like last year. And now it's saying that we should be building protective bike lanes on um higher speed arterials with more traffic. And we didn't know that. Uh, maybe we did um 10 years ago, but that's just not what our, what our guide said. So I, I feel like there needs to be a conversation about how we can allow our transportation standards and um how we view the system to evolve outside of whatever 10-year cycle the TSP is on. Um, and then figure out a way how to fund it. I know our um current TSP has goals. Uh, like I think we have a goal for like, I think 30% of commuters to be riding transit by a specific date. We don't have a goal to fund that. Um, we have a, you know, active transportation goals in our TSP. Those projects um that have been identified um to accomplish those goals um don't have like a dedicated funding source in that TSP. Um, so I think the new transportation system plan is supposed to be cost constrained. Um, so the city is supposed to be able to identify a source for a project in order for it to be on the TSP. Um, but yeah, I, I do think there's a serious need to happen for some conversations so we get it more fluid and um transportation system that works for the city. So um, I've got probably a million other thoughts.
Um, do you have any questions, Commissioner Fryback?
Uh, yeah, actually I did. Uh, I think I wrote them down. Um, yeah. Yeah, were there any, like, specific changes to the S R C that you would think could be helpful? Like in the near term and between now and when we do the T S P?
Yeah, I think the difficult thing is trying to, like parse that between do it now and wiggle to the T S P thing. So that's, that one, I feel not in a position to be able to, because I don't know where the, I don't know where the T S P is. I don't know what this, how big an effort that is, how long that's going to take. But I, I do think there's some things, I mean, I think that's probably up to the planning commission or others to decide what's the, what's the best way to kind of parse this out. But I mean, I think there are some things we'd like to, like, I think we would like to see something in like, in some of the development codes that looked at more explicitly recognizing safety or something like that. I think that would be, that would be something we can do right now. I think you've got some things in there that you're looking at in terms of, you know, design standards for, you know, by, there are things we could do to. That's always an issue that comes up when we have, you know, the level of service. That's always an issue that comes up with in West Salem, certainly, because we have a lot of, you know, the impacts spill out from the development that are going on to the, you know, arterial network. So we have issues there about what are the, you know, what are the improvements are being made there? Again, the concern is that if we start looking at, you know, what are we going to do for transit? It's except for a few place, you know, Wallace Road and kind of in Edgewater there, we're kind of limited and what are, so it's, again, that is why I want to put that thing, it's unlikely to move that, you know, if we put something in there that says, okay, put these, all this analysis, I'm not sure we get a lot out of the, you know, the analysis in terms of, is it going to move anything in terms of, are we going to, are we going to manifestly change what's happening with, you know, the transit route there? I mean, those, there's other things that are going to drive that. So notwithstanding that, I think there, I think there's some, maybe some tweaks or some improvements that can be made. But I just don't, I just don't have a sense of what the, you know, do you wait and you bundle that all in the T S P? Because that's, that's coming. I mean, I don't know. I think some of these things we would like to see. I guess the particular, I mean, the main one I'm kind of bending more on is kind of the safety area because I think that's an area that we, we'd like to see something done on, maybe, you know, on the trap. Again, maybe that's some sort of inducement. I don't know, I don't, I don't know what that, what you put in the inducement if you put something. Again, someone's got to figure that out. Is that done? Like, okay, do we do somewhere like a trip? Do we provide some sort of, you know, you know, something that takes off the number of trips based on you do this type of traffic com, I don't, I don't have the, you gotta do this. It's just an idea. Some, I was trying to figure out something that say, you don't say, because like, yeah, that going and telling and develop, you gotta put a, you know, a traffic circle in there. But if you find, if you put a traffic circle in here, you get, I don't know what, what you get, but you get something. So they're like, oh, well, I weren't, I weren't really thinking through this thing, but hey, this is, this is enough of an inducement for us to say, we're going to do it. That, that's the, that's the sort of thought process. Because I didn't, what I didn't want to come and say is, you gotta change the specific code to do this, 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 and it's got to be this. Because I don't think that that's necessarily what's going to work. So that was just to show some ideas about, here's some ideas, what's worked elsewhere. Maybe it works in the Salem context. Maybe it, maybe there's just, maybe it's not enough and maybe we need to have some other thing. But it was a lot of things that was trying to provide some sort of, in just a wider span, you know, span of things a developer could look at. And maybe some sort of way to induce them to, you know, we weren't thinking about this thing. Hey, you know, but if you're encouraging us to do it and you'll do this to get us, to get us there, we'll give it a, we'll give it a try. And maybe some of it is also doing some of these things more like a, you give it a pilot, the sort of thing. Let's, let's just try this out, see if it works. Does it, you know, manifestly get something? But I think what we wanted to do is get away from the, let's go and do this thing. And then we got to have to come back years later and do a retrofit. And whether that retrofit is doing some pedestrian safety improvement or something, it's really, it's trying to get, because we know that that's, it takes a long time to get some of that, the, the traffic data, the safety data. And a lot of those things, when you're dealing with vulnerable road users are not apparent in the data itself. And it, and it's got to compete against things. So the idea was if we could put some of those things upfront in the, in the development, you know, adding those things in, creating an inducement to put those in, that would be, that would be in itself a benefit.
Well, thank you. I think we're probably at the end of this conversation. So I will talk with my colleagues about how we can best follow up on this. And as Commissioner Tab pointed out, we do have a transportation subcommittee. They might have an interest in following up on this, but I know that we will, we will do some sort of follow up with you on this. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you again for the planning commission. I also want to thank city staff for doing, for giving me the time on the agenda and also going through the whole presentation. So thanks, thank you very much.
So we will go on to, yes, absolutely.
Uh, Lisa, can you share the presentation with all of us?
Information reports. It's you, Mr. Fryback.
Uh, yeah, so information report, so the transportation subcommittee meeting for, uh, I think it's next week, it was planned. I will have to cancel on that because I've got somewhere I need to be on that day. But yeah, I think I'm definitely going to be reaching out to Mr. Forty about this and hopefully we'll, you guys will hear more. I don't know what kind of response you guys might be interested in hearing. Are you, you know, what you need from us?
Yeah, 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 let's, let's talk and maybe lay out a little plan and share it with the rest of our colleagues here and see if they have any thoughts.
We are on the planning commission after all, so.
We are, I've been told. The Wetlands Committee has been moving forward with an aggressive meeting agenda. And we look to have a report and kind of a first round of recommendations out in the first meeting in December. So hopefully we'll have a product there and you'll be happy with it. That's it for me on this one, the planning administrators report, everyone's favorite time.
Thank you. Just pointing out, we don't have any items scheduled right now for the next meeting, which is October twenty eighth. And then we do have two public hearings coming up on November fourth. So comp plan zone changes associated with annexations, where the planning commission makes a recommendation on the zoning and then the council decides to annex the property or not. And just a reminder, Planner Palooza is tomorrow, four thirty to six thirty at Fork Forty Food Hall. So we hope you will join us or anybody watching will come. There's some prizes, there's food, there's planners, there's posters.
Everything you could want.
Yeah, it's always fun.
All right. Any questions for Lisa? Any comments for the good of the order? Any remaining comments? All right, we're adjourned.